I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take role? Councilmember Raditz?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Lasky?
Here.
Mayor Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Keck?
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Here.
Councilmember Rezga?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
DPW director?
Here.
Finance director?
Here.
Police chief?
Here.
Fire chief?
Here.
City engineer?
Here.
Role call complete. In public hearings, we have non-citizens' comments on agenda-related items. Any citizens with correspondence to be distributed to council should provide items to city clerk prior to the start of the meeting or after the meeting has adjourned, limited to five minutes.
Brian Chick, 276 First Avenue. From what I understand, this will probably pass tonight. Big mistake. You guys are gonna let 165 go and then other ones. Luddington allows only 50. They charge $1,500 for their registration. We charge 100. When are you gonna get any revenue built up so you can hire somebody to look over these, this stuff? You gotta build up some revenue so they can go after the people when they aren't following the rules. Are, what kind of fines did we finally come up with? Nothing out there in the paper on that. Last I know, it was 100 and 200 and... It should be 1,000 and 2,000 and 3,000 to put some teeth to it. We don't, and if we get some money, we can hire somebody with some knowledge how to take care of this stuff. Because right now, I got four of them 100 yards from my house. And if you go another 100 yards or seven, and another 50 yards, you got nine of them. If they go in five blocks, I got almost 20 of them. One's coming up behind your house. I hope you get a bute behind ya. I really do. Because if you have, you, and you and I talked, you were all against short-term rentals. Now, all of a sudden, you've just flip-flopped on this. And I just, I, I still think he can, the lawyer can say whatever he wants. There's a conflict of interest with two of his on the council. And lawyers and judges all have different opinions. But when you make any financial gains, which there is, this conflict of interest, you should recuse yourself. And I'd like to see the overlay put up. A lot of people are asking, well, what, what's exempt? Where, where can they add more? And stuff like that. We're, people are blind to this thing. And that's why I think you should just vote it down, wait till September 30th, till this vacation season and go over and really get a good view of what you really need to do. And get citizens involved. I mean, people that are, own them are on the ordinance committee? Give me a break.
Thank you. What else?
Hi, Elizabeth Herman, 305 First Avenue. I have been reluctant to speak because I fear retaliation, retribution, since unfortunately, that's the direction the country appears to be in. I don't see a news advocate person, but I did not want them to use my name or a photo. Many cities throughout the state are reevaluating short-term rentals. Many of the, especially the ones along the lake shore. Many of the citizens do not want them, or they want to camp. State law says they are business, and businesses are not to be in residential areas. Cities are trying to eliminate them or rein them in. My brother lived in South Haven for several decades. He said many residents do not like them and have moved away or are trying to, but they cannot find affordable housing. He relayed, many renters seem to think they could do whatever they wanted. Issues are more litter, rudeness, being loud, disruption, obnoxious, drunk or on drugs, trespassing on private property, voiding out in public, et cetera. Manistee does not need this. I have found it difficult to get answers as to how many short-term rentals Granicus has found. How many are in residential areas? How many are in the allowed areas? I haven't been able to access the map online. I could not read clearly what was in the paper. The map was too small. Why weren't short-term rentals stopped years ago? The ordinance was not followed. As far as I'm concerned, a crime was committed. I guess the city is just pardoning them. They never should have been allowed in the first place. The city has dropped the ball on this for several years. The executive of my parents' estate had received a letter from the city saying the house would be in short-term rental. It has never, ever been a short-term rental. The only people who used the house were the people who owned it. How are short-term rentals taxed? Does the city get more taxes than if the house was a regular residence? If not, this could cuts into money that could be allocated for fire, EMS, law enforcement, public works, et cetera. I've read articles that when cities give tax breaks for developers, the developer makes out well, but the city loses tax money. Does the city send the state a list of rentals so the state can make sure the taxes on the income are properly paid? If not, this cuts state money for roads, parks, et cetera, if the income is not reported. The news advocate had a poll about people supporting an ordinance. The question may have been better worded, "I support an ordinance banning them in all residential areas." The article also said some feel the property owner should be able to do what they want. So is it a drug house, prostitution house fine? Property owners already have fire pits and smoke out the neighborhood with cancer-causing chemicals. If council approves the ordinance, I hope they will pause additional ones and see how things play out. I think we need a balance. I realize Manistee wants tourists. The Gateway Project may bring in many, and Manistee could see a smaller, well, excuse me, Manistee could lose its small-town appeal. I don't want Manistee to lose its quality of life. I think no more short-term rentals should be allowed in residential areas. Eliminating them would be great. There are hotels, motels. We need a pause. Then the city can evaluate how things are working. It is hard to go backwards. Part of what makes Manistee great are the neighborhoods and less craziness than big cities. Somewhere, I get the impression short-term rentals were to have signs with a contact person posted. That doesn't always happen. Some short-term owners have said they don't even know they're supposed to be registered. The fees and fines are ridiculously low. I agree with Mr. Chick. The city has a housing shortage. People with school-aged children could be in these homes, which increase local school funding. Short-term rentals contribute to the shortage of homes, which really annoys me. I have heard that the hospital has a very large staffing shortage because people cannot find housing for them. This could affect our local healthcare. I have not verified that, but that's what I've been hearing. I do feel it is a conflict of interest for some council members to vote. Myself, I would never want to give the appearance of a conflict, even if I felt it wasn't. Just because the Supreme Court has justices like Thomas, who didn't excuse himself regarding cases about January 6th insurrection, doesn't mean it is right. The public trust in the court is very low, and it may turn into that for council members. I feel more info needs to be shared with citizens. It feels like the city is pulling a fast one by keeping secret the total numbers. Maybe this issue should be voted on. I realize the ordinance has a good chance of passing, but I've stated, I think a pause needs to be happened. The consequences of too many can be disastrous, as I said. It's hard to go backwards. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you can just sit over here. Hi, my name is Donna Nelson, and I live on Fourth Avenue. The people that, that just got up, they also live on the north side, and I agree with everything they said. I have in my hand something that, handed to the clerk, was on the 17th of May, about 3:30 in the morning, 3 o'clock. I was awakened by my dog and voices outside. And there was some profanity, and I could tell that it was men. It wasn't children. And, well, I took care of the dog, and we went back to sleep. And about 8:30 in the morning, I opened my front curtains, and there was, I, well, I thought it was a body laying on the street. Well, on the sidewalk. Well, it wasn't. It was, the officer describes it as a mannequin. It's sort of a seasonal thing that I put up on, in fall, summer, winter. And my neighbor got what happened on the Ring video, because they're great neighbors, and they watch over me, because I'm older. Anyway, I did call the police, and I did file a report. And the officer went down to the vacation rental down the street. And in the report, it does say, well, because there was three guys, well, I, you know, he was so drunk, he didn't know what he was doing. And I just feel, you know, there's not enough rules. There's not enough fines. There's too many already of the vacation rentals. It's not that I'm against them. It's just that it's too many for this town, and with 165, if I get that number right, coming in, you know, I want to know where, is there like, so many will go on the south side, so many will go on the north side. We seem to have quite a bit on the north side. And I just think that there needs to be better licensing, people that can be, you know, contacted in the neighborhood, that wherever these people are that own these houses. So I just want to ask you to please reconsider your vote. If it's a yes, not, I'm not saying completely stop everything, but just something has to change to protect what we have here. I, when I bought the house in 2016, and I lived downstate, I didn't move up here till I retired, till January of 19. And it seemed like wherever I was, people I met, it didn't matter whether it was at a school function or if it was at a movie, or if I just talked to people on the street. They go, "Manistee, oh my God, that's where we've spent our summers." And my grandparents live over on Nelson. And it's like, you know, it's like there is a vibe here. And the second lady that spoke, I mean, truly, please think about what is really needed, what is good for this community. Don't destroy what people come here for. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Mary Wilhelm. First and foremost, thank you all for your service on city council. It's very much appreciated. I agree with three-quarters of the respondents to the news advocates' polling that unlimited short-term rentals in exempt areas is unfair. The exempt areas already have an advantage due to their location that is waterfront. As far as comparing our tourist experience in motels, short-term rentals offer economies of scale not available in motels, and I understand that, such as meal preparation for large groups. In my opinion, the biggest beneficiaries of short-term rentals are Meyer and Family Fair and their respective gas stations, as well as our beaches. In the interest of transparency, I have held a real estate license in the state of Michigan for 30-plus years, and a long-term rental in the city for 20-plus years. Even though I don't agree with the exempt areas, portions of the proposed ordinance, please pass it so the city will have some say-so over short-term rentals. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Tim Riley. I live at 346 10th Street. I own, along with my wife, Boardwalk Vacation Rentals. We manage a total of about 72 properties throughout the county. About 50 of those are within the city of Manistee. So, you know, we have a lot at stake at this. I appreciate all of the work that has been done by the city administration and by city council to do this. There's just a couple of things that I just want to make sure get put out there. Number one, short-term rentals, the people that come to short-term rentals, they don't just go to a hotel or a motel if they can't find a home. These are families, these are groups, these are people that come in. They're not gonna stay at a hotel room if they can't find a place here. They're just gonna go find a place somewhere else. They come into town, and they spend a lot of money here in town. And I, and I recognize and agree that Meyer and Family Fair and gas stations and those, they bring a lot of money to those type of establishments. But they also bring money to our downtown, to our restaurants, to our golf courses, to fishing charters, to everybody here in town that provides services. They provide those services to our visitors. And these are a group of visitors that are not going to come to Manistee if we start drastically limiting short-term rentals. I support the short-term rental ordinance that you guys have presented. I think it's a good starting point. I think it strikes a fair balance. And that's, I guess, all I gotta say about it. So, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered by the city manager to be routine matters prior to approval. Any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval of minutes, payroll invoices, consideration of ordinance 25-02 to add Chapter 868 Short-Term Rental and amend Chapter 1482 Residential Rental Properties of the City of Manistee, Michigan Codified Ordinances. Consideration of zoning ordinance Z25-02 to add Article 23 Short-Term Rentals and amend various articles to include short-term rentals. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I, I would like to request removing a couple items for discussion, further discussion. The item 7B, the short-term rental ordinance, and the zoning ordinance.
I have a question on 6B on one invoice.
So we're remove, I'm sorry, we're removing 6B and what was he?
7B.
6B and 7B.
And the zoning ordinance.
Well, 7B is the zoning ordinance.
So A and B?
Okay.
Do you, 7A, 7A is the ordinance, 7B is the zoning ordinance.
So then I guess it would be 7, it's the first part.
7A and B.
7A and B.
Okay, so we're removing 6B, I'm sorry, yes, 6B and 7A and B? Is that correct? So Lasky requested? Okay.
6B.
6B, okay.
Yep, just one invoice, just a question.
Thanks.
So are we taking a role to remove those two?
So now we just need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the removal of items 6B and 7A and B.
Okay, so?
So I need a motion and a second.
I'll make that motion.
Please take role.
Lasky was my second. I'm sorry. Councilmember Raditz?
No.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Keck?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Rezga?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, consideration of ordinance 25-02 to add Chapter 868 Short-Term Rentals and amend Chapter 14?
Invoices are first, I'm sorry, so there's a?
Where's that at?
6B.
Isn't that under, that would be under, that would be under, that would be at, oh, yes, it is, I'm sorry.
I don't know what you're looking at.
So 6B is before 7A, so I guess the question regarding the invoices?
I just have one question. It was on, it was an invoice stated, 21825, page 61625. Is it under the department manager, 172101-172-801? It was 850, and it was paid to Spicer's, and the description states Jefferson Property Division. And I was just questioning it, because we're working tonight, we're discussing on Jefferson. I thought, what was that invoice for? And it was on property we don't own. So I was, the city was?
So it was, it was a survey. So I had them do a survey on the property. I had Spicer prepare a survey.
Okay, we, we paid for the survey rather than the school or the, it was the survey on the total property or a survey on just what the potential or the lot division?
So it was, it was a survey on the property to see if it could be an acceptable conversion property for the state of Michigan. I think I mentioned to council, I was looking at that, if we were to sell the Fracano's property. So I need a survey done. And I can show you the survey. So this is the, this is the survey that was performed for $850.
I thought we already had that survey, but maybe not. Maybe it was incorrect. I thought I saw a survey with the lots divided. But now this has it marked off for the park? Is that what we're saying, or?
Yeah, I think this is old, isn't it?
So it was done previously, but the payment went through recently.
When was the survey done? I'm not seeing?
January 25. But they just paid it in?
I understand that. I, I guess I thought I had seen a survey before on this, earlier, like in '20, that it was done when it, right after the bond proposal was passed, but, okay.
So are we good?
Should I make a motion?
Yes, you can do a motion to approve the invoices.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the invoices.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take a role?
Councilmember Raditz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Keck?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Rezga?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Back to A then? Consideration of ordinance 25-02 to add Chapter 868 Short-Term Rentals and amend Chapter 1482 Residential Rental Properties of the City of Manistee, Michigan Codified Ordinances. City staff prepared a draft short-term rentals ordinance, which went before the Planning Commission on March 13th, 2025. The ordinance, the city ordinance committee comprised of three councilmembers met on May 21st and June 5th to review the short-term rental draft ordinance. The current draft being considered includes the ordinance committee's recommendations. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. This ordinance was introduced July 1st, 2025 meeting, and could be adopted at this time. At this time, council could take action to adopt ordinance 25-02, adding Chapter 868 Short-Term Rentals, amending Chapter 1482 Residential Rental Properties. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the ordinance, but I would like the following exception, like the removal from the overlay exemption map that has Lighthouse Landings and Chipwatch and any other condo association whose bylaws currently do not allow short-term rentals.
I think it's on page 47.
This is their second, but do you want to restate it?
Could you please restate that, Liz?
A motion to?
Could I interrupt real quick before we do that?
Yes.
So this is the regulatory ordinance. This would not adopt the overlay. That would be under the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
So you may wanna, might suggest rephrasing that motion when you get to the zoning ordinance.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So do you like to make a new motion?
I, I actually had something too. So, so under, on page 33, under, it's the A part?
So we, we have a motion?
Oh.
Yeah. We have a motion on the table?
Okay.
From Councilmember Lasky. Would we need to get a second on that first?
Or do you rescind your motion?
I'll rescind it, and we'll bring it up at the?
Okay.
Next one. Is there a new motion before discussion? Do you have a motion, Ms. Councilmember Lasky?
I'm kind of lost here. But yes, I, I have some changes to suggest under A and B. So on page 33, the last paragraph states, "While visitors to the community who rent dwelling units on a short-term basis bring many benefits to the community, they can simultaneously also create problems." And I'm just suggesting we put a period there and remove the regarding traffic, parking, congestion, litter, noise. It just seems, I don't know why we don't list the pros, but yet we list the cons. And, and then just carry on with the rest of the paragraph. Does that?
So you're doing a motion to approve with that sentence removed?
With that phrasing, a period after create problems. And remove regarding, you know, where we list out the details of what we don't, that could create problems.
Does that change? How do I put that to the motion?
Is there a second for that?
I'll make, a second.
Just, it's approved with that, with this perbit removed regarding the last?
Can you discuss on the whole ordinance?
A portion of the last.
Do we make that first part? Can we make both?
Remove a portion of the?
I'm gonna ask a question.
Yeah, I remember reading it.
I would just say removal of a portion of the license. With a removal of?
Removal of, in what section is that, this section?
Section point 01.
2301, Short-Term Rental Overlay, B.
So how's zoom in? It's just 01, the last.
Oh, it's 02, or 01.
So it's a motion, a second. Any discussion?
A discussion on that ordinance. I just, it was insinuated at the last meeting. It was mentioned in the paper that I had a conflict of interest in the short-term rental, voting on it because a family member had an STR. That person, that councilperson mentioned would be me, since our daughter does have a 465 square-foot studio in Harbor Village. Harbor Village and specifically Brook Harbor Condo Association within Harbor Village, they have their own bylaws that, as we discussed at the last meeting, the condo bylaws take precedence over the city ordinance or the city ordinance regarding short-term rentals. I have no investment in the condo, and I have no economic gain from the unit. However, there is, at this point in my life, I would never want to jeopardize my integrity and have something stated that if anybody, or if the attorney thinks that I should excuse myself, I have no problem with that. I am not gonna do anything that's not above board or unethical at this point. So I can see that, what your advice would be like.
Blake, any comment on the potential conflict of interest? So by understanding the fact, that you have a family member that owns a short-term rental, yeah, I mean, in legislative matters such as adopting ordinance, there must be a direct, unique financial benefit to you beyond that which would accrue to a normal member of the community. And that would just not occur, you know, through the, the facts of the situation where you have a family member that owns an STR. All property owners within the city are more or less equally affected. They're all subject to the ordinance. So I, I don't see that as, as a conflict of interest situation.
Okay, then I should vote on this. I have the freedom to vote on this now, or the opportunity not to excuse myself, is what you're saying?
Blake, so Councilmember Lasky's saying that she does not have a conflict of interest, and she does not have to recuse herself from voting, correct? Correct, that is my opinion.
So I'm just gonna re- So I'm just gonna restate the motion that I have. I have a motion by councilmember Rosga, a second by councilmember Grabowski to adopt the ordinance 2502 adding chapter 868 short-term rentals and amending chapter 1482 residential rental properties with the removal of the last section of the last paragraph of section 868.01.
Not quite. It, it's just the words regarding traffic, parking, congestion, litter, noise, and other similar issues.
Right. I'm removing the last section of that paragraph.
Where do you want it to end?
After problems. And then it can continue with the additionally. That doesn't need to be removed.
Okay, just the issues, okay.
Yeah, just those few words. Only those words.
So removing, so removing regarding traffic, parking, congestion. Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Removing, and I'm just gonna start with. Can you just?
Zoom in.
Yep, that'd be great. Okay, got it. Sorry about that. I misunderstood. Okay.
So then, um, the other suggestion is regarding the zoning.
Wait, we gotta, we gotta vote on this one first.
I'm sorry. I just want to get it over with.
All right, so are we ready?
Are we ready to take a roll? Yes, please.
Okay. Councilmember Raddatz.
Thank you for clarifying what we're voting on and yes.
Okay. Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of zoning ordinance Z25-02 to add article 23 short-term rentals and amend various articles to include short-term rentals. Zoning ordinance Z25-02 adding article 23 short-term rentals and amendments to various articles define and establish the short-term rental overlay which shows the exempt area from the short-term rental cap from the rest of the city. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. The ordinance was introduced at the July 1st, 2025 meeting and could be adopted at this time. At this time, council could take action to adopt zoning ordinance Z25-02 adding article 23 short-term rentals and amending various articles to include short-term rentals. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
There a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion on this one?
I, my suggestion is, um, under section 2301B, page 47. Let you catch, catch up. It states the lots, parcels, and properties within the short-term rental overlay are otherwise subject to all use and so on. And it pursuant to the underlying zoning district. And I don't know what this has to do with the law or anything, but the suggestion is except those organizations that expressly prohibit short-term rentals such as condominium association bylaws. Add that in between there.
Which, okay, specifically where?
So, um, B and then it. Right after district, basically, the words except those organizations that expressly prohibit short-term rentals such as condominium association bylaws.
Maybe other words, whose bylaws currently, so that.
Good. Oh, yeah, okay, that makes sense. Such as.
Whose bylaws currently do not.
Somewhere the word currently, because things change in bylaws. That makes sense.
Can you read that again just one more time?
Um, after zoning district, except those organizations that currently prohibit short-term rentals such as condominium association bylaws. That's just an example. I mean, I don't know what kind of rules organizations may have. They might be called something different.
As part of discussion, could we hear from our attorney on what impact that might have for not only potential condos, but HOAs or other types of organizations?
Not potential. I think we have to have it for currently.
Well, again, just what Blake has to say for my part.
Yeah, it sounds good.
So Blake, um, do we restate the question?
Nope. Right, so I mean, i- in theory, you could add language in there that states that, you know, it's, it's prohibited to operate short-term rental where it's otherwise not allowed under your condominium documents. Um, I think we'd have to be kind of, be a little, be a little bit careful with the drafting. Um, so it would probably take a little bit of time to really kind of draft an appropriate provision. Um, I, I would, I guess, make the point that it, it's not really necessary. Um, your condominium documents are gonna trump anything in a zoning ordinance to the extent that the condominium documents are more restrictive. So I, I don't think that that provision would really add anything to the zoning ordinance. But, but in theory, we certainly could draft something like that. Um, it would just take, take some careful wording.
So I guess I should explain my reasoning, why I'm making this request. Might be helpful. When the Lighthouse Landing Group came in, what I got from that, they were, I got the thought that they were afraid that now that the city is allowing short-term rentals, that people there might start pressuring the organization to change their bylaws to allow short-term rentals. And I kind of feel this is redundant, adding this, I agree, but I think it's not a big request. And that's, you know, because I realize it is redundant in a way because we all know what the rules are. But, you know, that was my thought.
Added after, I mean, it just came out and they saw it in the paper. It wasn't like that was on the planning commission meetings that they'd met several times doing this, that overlay kept constantly evolving. And they did not have a chance until this ordinance was in the, the first draft of reading, the first read, to even, uh, s- speak out. And soon as they saw it in the paper, they came to that next meeting and they did have that opportunity and they utilized it and they spoke out and said, no, we want it, no, we want it to be very clear that, um, that. Yeah, that it's stated, that so that a change in our, uh, board couldn't influence.
We can't stop the condo association from making changes.
Correct.
So I don't know that we feel. The ordinance committee already took into consideration that their bylaws would supersede our rules. To postpone the inevitable here just to add language, you know, it's one thing to remove language, but like Blake says, we have to be very careful with the wording of that. It would be my opinion to leave it as is. We can't stop the association from changing their bylaws. We've made our statement. You work accordingly is how I see that. Because these, these ordinances can change every day of the week, just like when we discussed removing, you know, the, the association altogether from, you know, and using names. We, we don't know what the future holds, but this is the ordinance that the ordinance committee felt just with. That's just my two cents worth. So.
I think we always have to listen to the people though and protect them and they did not have the opportunity to speak up. You know, I think we're here to represent the people.
They didn't have the opportunity to speak up. We took that into consideration, the ordinance committee.
I understand what you're saying, but I think they wanted it to be permanently stated as it was, but.
So.
I guess I was just trying to be respectful of their.
Yes.
Concerns. That's all.
And I appreciate that, but it does say that in not so many words. It already is.
We know what the law is. You know, that's the bottom line. I, I understand.
Yeah, I, I just want to add, I, I really do believe in the democratic process and the people that live there have just as much right it now or in the future to change their bylaws. I don't feel it is the responsibility of this committee to take away that opportunity from that group of people if they want to make sure that their bylaws contain language that restricts short-term rental. That's incumbent upon that body to make that decision, not this body. So I, I, I don't feel that's, I understand they didn't have as much time, but I think we can agree and we're hearing from our attorney that this body is protected and all the condo associations that have that in their current bylaws are also protected. So I feel like if anything should change, it shouldn't be just us trying to make up for an article when it came out in the paper and someone receiving it. They have due process within their association, just as these citizens here had.
Just as neighborhoods do. Yes, I agree.
So I've. Yeah.
I want to know, uh, I read so many zoning ordinances. I mean, I went from everyone that we started out with, and I was reading it today till the date and the minute I came down here. And did we take out 160 units that are around 65 units around town? Because there's so many on the north side and I don't see it in the ordinance. Is that, did, did, uh, did you guys, ordinance committee draw, take out the 165 units? Are we gonna limit?
No, we have a cap of 165 outside of the exemption area. So there's, it's unlimited in the exemption area. They're exempt from the cap and then you have 165 is the limit outside of that.
Because whether, somebody mentioned they're opening more. You got seven on one street and four more are opening up. And I think we have to limit these things. This is again on hand.
I think that's why it's important when we pass an ordinance that puts a cap because when this was last looked at a couple of months ago, there was like 131. So, I mean, the longer we wait, the larger the number seems to get. So I'm, I'm really glad to get something in place.
I can say why I'm saying this is because I got some nasty letters from people saying, who are you to take and regulate? How many are in here? Why are you telling people how much to charge? I mean, we went through the whole gambit and I think that they ought to read the ordinance and, and go by that instead of calling and telling people. But the way threatening stuff is going around the country, I don't feel that I should have got the email. But I'll answer them if they want my answer.
I currently, just so you know, I currently have a motion on the table from councilmember Keck and a second. I believe it was councilmember Rosga. Was that correct?
I, yeah.
To adopt the zoning ordinance, um, Z2502 adding article 23 short-term rentals and amending various articles to include short-term rentals. That motion is currently on the table.
Okay.
Okay.
So we can, more discussion of this one?
No.
Heather, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Raddatz.
Oh, please pause.
Sure.
I was listening here and here and I didn't do a great job.
Oh, would you like me to restate that?
So it would be for item 7B.
Everything is as is.
As is.
Um, so it's motion by Keck, councilmember Keck, second by councilmember Rosga to adopt zoning ordinance Z2502 adding article 23 short-term rentals and amending various articles to include short-term rentals. We have not amended anything with that.
Thank you so much, everyone, for being patient with me.
Yep. Now I just wanted to make sure everybody knew what the, what the motion was that was on the table right now.
Much appreciated.
Okay. Are we good to, you ready for a roll call? Okay. Councilmember Raddatz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Rosga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Hey, introduction of Tim Ball, the code enforcement officer.
Hello.
Hi. Um, my name's Tim Ball. Uh, for hiring me and, and giving me opportunity to serve this community. Um, I'm in my fourth week now and, uh, it's been interesting to say the least. And, and I believe that, uh, we're already doing some positive things out there. Moving, moving some blight around and, and getting it off our, off our properties and streets. And, and I guess that's my goal overall coming in here is to, is to assist the city and, and find folks of the city to, to make this community beautiful.
I'm happy you're still here. I heard you.
Yes.
Your first task was Maple Street, so happy to still here.
Yes.
Yeah, that's one for the books. Tough start.
So, anything else that you guys want to know or question?
Mr. Ball, I'm on the ordinance committee that's working on blight and defining blight, having more actionable outcomes, uh, within our, our local ordinances. So just so happy that you are here, really. This, this is a piece that, um, I think our residents can see immediate action from and this is a culmination of, of a city council long before I came that you're here. So, uh, just want to say how excited we are.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a memorandum of understanding with the Manistee County Land Bank Authority and the corresponding letter of intent regarding the Jefferson School project. Manistee area public schools has indicated its intent to sell Jefferson School property to the Manistee County Land Bank Authority for the del, I'm sorry, the development of single-family homes. As part of their planning, the MCLBA would like to know whether the city is interested in acquiring a portion of the site for public green space. Uh, Mr. Gamble is presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. So the county land bank, this is, obviously, this project's had a lot of history, but, um, we're at the point now where the county land bank is looking to acquire the property and put some housing there as that's their mission. They are asking that the city, state, if we would like any of the land there. Um, I did a letter of intent, a draft letter for council and recommended, um, potentially two options. Of course, if council has another option they would, they would like, that's another thing. But I think the, talking with the budding property owners and full disclosure, I, I do take my children to the playground there, but a lot of times that has been used as a, as a playground. And, um, just from hearing, I think, a compromise with some parkland and housing is, um, would be a compromise to kind of bring this issue to conclusion. So one aspect you have, one of these options, I have just the playground area. There's, um, some of our sanitary, um, utilities are in, of, um, pipes are in that area as well. And then you have another option which would include the green space where ma, I'm sorry, the MRA uses, has soccer practice there. And then if there's a potential for wanting the, the parking lot. And obviously, this is just stated what we would like, but we're gonna have to work with the land bank on kind of what's feasible too with what they need to do to make this project work. So with that, I just want to open it up for discussion and see what council's thoughts were and, um, yeah, I'll invite Katie up as well if anyone has any questions about the project.
Can you scroll that back down?
Sure.
So this is hard for me to judge. Is there playground equipment there now that would be coming with said property or?
There is existing playground equipment.
Okay.
Yes, there's some swing sets.
And decent, I mean, or is it aged as much as Jefferson School?
It's not new. It's, and I think probably councilmember Raddatz could tell us more about the age, but it's not new, but it's not, I wouldn't say it's the oldest playground equipment the city has in parks, so.
And as far as the soccer field for practice, um, do we have other practice fields available if we don't take all of that?
Um, the MRA would be better to answer that, but I know they use Duffy, some other areas. I don't know, Jeff, if you want, if you can comment on.
I mean, my fear is we've got two absolutely beautiful baseball fields down at the beach and they're never utilized. You know, um, I mean, I think I've ridden by there three times when I see a ball, a ball game going on. So I don't, I'm certainly not against green space. Don't get me wrong. I'm just wondering with the need for housing, if we yet still need more green space. I'm just getting.
I mean, Bill, I'm on the MRA board and, you know, it's one of the, the MRA has become one of the crown jewels of, of this community.
Okay.
It, they're busy, they're expanding. There's definitely a need for the space.
Okay.
Uh, as far as the baseball fields down by, you know, the first street, I know the senior league uses those.
No, it's the couples, and then there's kickball league down there, and they are used.
Okay.
So, it's, there's definitely probably, you know, right, there's, Manistee has lots, has a lot of parks, a lot, a lot, a lot of green space. But I think this would probably be, in my opinion, it'd be a worthwhile, you know, use of it. There's never too much is, when it comes to, you know, the kids.
Okay. So, we're just kind of gauging what we would like to see. This isn't like a final, like, we can have like work sessions on this and talk with the land bank and figure out.
Good evening, everyone. Katie Grunberg, I'm the county planning director, but I'm also the project manager for the land bank authority. So, this was really just to initiate the conversation. We wanted to make sure we knew if the city did want to be involved in potentially acquiring a piece of the property, just so that we can better formulate like what our action plan is moving forward. But yes, I would agree with that statement that we are not looking for like a definitive boundary at this time. We really just want to initiate the conversation and know if, what we're looking for definitively is if the city would like to acquire a piece, and then we can have more discussions on what that piece looks like in the future.
Okay.
And just to clarify, Katie, thank you. The project, the, the sale from the map, from maps to the land bank would go on regardless if the city, if the city says, if we say, nope, we don't want any part of this, that project's still going to go forward, correct?
Correct. That is the intent of the land bank at this time. There still is some figuring to be done with maps on what that deal ultimately looks like for the land bank to acquire the property, but that is the discussion that came out of the work sessions and meetings from the land bank authority, that if the city decided that, you know, you did not want to be involved and did not want to acquire any of the land, then the land bank would proceed with maps on what that looks like for us to acquire the entire piece.
Okay, thank you.
It's part of the parks and part of the island neighborhood, I'll disclose that. That park has been a park since 1954, and it is utilized, and it's a neighborhood park. I like the parking lot, we're trying to get a parking lot at Morton, and it's expensive. And it's, a, a park is, needs a parking lot for, so the people are not parking on the streets. One of the drawbacks with Red Shamark is it's not off-street parking there, so. And I think, I look at what other towns, we do have parks, Jeff maintains the parks. I don't know if the city, they're known for their parks, there's green space, I don't, I, I think, I would recommend that, of course, we would want a park. To say no to a park, I'd hate to, I'd hate to be known as a council that turned down green space. And I know we, it's just saying that we would like to have the opportunity, but we don't know the size or any of the other factors. But it's, I think you're just asking, would we, if possible, like to be considered to have the park, right, Katie?
Yes. And I don't know if, I haven't really talked to Bill about this, but maybe like a joint work session might be warranted to like nail down some of those details, a way that we can get council and the land bank in the same room. But yeah, that's, that's what we're looking for tonight, just if the city would like to participate, so the land bank can continue to formulate like what this looks like moving forward.
I, I do have a question. So, part of the land bank, if the property in whole were to go to the land bank, that would have to mean that any development would have to meet the, the neighborhood aesthetics. Is that correct?
That is the full intention of the land bank. We definitely don't want to pursue anything that isn't like fitting for the neighborhood or something that the neighbors desire. We've had a lot of conversation about having public input. To my knowledge, there is no, like, I mean, the city does have limited like design standards built into the zoning ordinance, and then we'd have to comply with zoning, but, you know, that would be the idea of the land bank, but I don't know that there would be any like hard requirement for strict like neighborhood aesthetic, but I don't want that to be misconstrued, that we don't want, is, am I answering your question?
I think there's been questions posed to me about like multiple family dwellings, which isn't characteristic of the neighborhood, or having, you know, like most of the, I represent that district.
Mm-hmm.
But most of the homes have a driveway, most of the homes have parking available. So, you know, is part of the land bank's involvement, be able to keep some of those characteristics, like single-family homes, lot sizes, that are similar to what's there now?
Yeah, I think that the initial idea of the land bank, you know, we've had it in our minds as single-family. We do intend to, if and when this whole deal goes through, we do intend to put the property out for bid and see what developers come up with. So, you know, I think that the idea is to do single-family, but we don't necessarily want to put ourselves in a box. We want to allow developers to show their creativity, but again, I don't want that to be misconstrued as like an apartment complex or something that doesn't fit with the neighborhood. We are, we are planning to do a lot of public involvement, take time with this. This isn't something that the land bank is looking to just flip and develop in the next like year. You know, the land bank is understanding and okay with sitting on this property for really as long as it takes to find the right developer and the right development. But the initial idea has always been single-family. You know, we recognize the history of this property, but I don't want to, you know, like I was saying, I don't want to put anything into a box, because we really do want to allow for a developer to come in, and if they have a creative proposal that is fitting with the neighborhood and something that the city and the neighborhood, you know, has good response, then maybe, maybe it could be something different. But, yeah, that's, that's kind of the idea right now, and it's just very initial stage. So, nothing is set in stone. Anything that the land bank would propose would comply with zoning. We would want to do public involvement, make sure that we're involving the neighborhood and getting that public input. We're not here to rush anything. We're not here to, you know, do a specific type of housing, but missing middle housing, that attainable housing that we need for our workforce, is what the land bank would like to see there.
I'm just thoughtful about, in the past, if a school has sold a property that has been income generating for the children in our community, and the involvement of the land bank, is there, is there revenue then involved for the school with this? Would the city have to come up with funding that would be equitable to what a developer would be seeking?
For the park portion of the property? So, again, we're in like the very initial stages, and Bill and I have talked about potential costs for the city to acquire a portion of the property. There has been, so originally, the land bank was going to acquire the property pre-demolition and demolish the school in exchange for the land. We were anticipating that that would cost around $250,000, somewhere between $250,000 and $300,000, given the price point of the demolition of Old Kennedy out on 31. So, the land bank is prepared and aware that there will be some sort of costs associated with this, and depending on what giving up the property looks like, if that's what council decides to go with, I think that will be a conversation that comes later on if there's like a cost sharing and what that looks like for acquiring the property.
So, at this point, you're just asking if there's interest?
If there's interest, yes. Nothing, you know, nothing official. We wanted to put together the MOU to give something to kind of spur this conversation and to make sure council knew what our intent was, but, you know, it is just that at this point, a memorandum of understanding and a letter of intent, so nothing truly binding, just really wanting to begin this discussion and get a take on where you guys are at with this property, and then we will be having many more conversations, I'm sure.
Okay. So, do you want me to?
I have. Go ahead. Things. So, regarding the memo of understanding itself, under general provisions, it's, it's not clear, because it states this memo is a non-binding agreement, and the next bullet point states, if both parties agree to this memo of understanding, it shall result in a legally binding agreement. So, I guess my feeling overall, you know, has there been a title search to verify if the city has or has not done a, have an easement on their, I guess the ones on the street aren't concerned, but the 10-inch sanitary sewer that goes through the property? I would like to know that.
I would maybe defer to Jeff on existing infrastructure easements, but, and I do genuinely appreciate the questions. I think that there are a lot of unanswered questions for this. If council isn't comfortable with the MOU itself, you know, even general consensus or even the letter, distributing the letter of intent, you know, I think that we'll have opportunity for like more of the technical questions, and just understanding if the city wants to be involved in this property is kind of the purpose of tonight.
I think we're all in agreement that we would like, we're interested.
Yes, I think so.
In the property. I don't think that's an issue.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, speaking of the letter intent, that in itself concerned me, because it indicates additional intentions other than just the purchase, potential purchase of the property, and I wanted to be clear that, you know, council hasn't made any decisions on other intentions.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's, the only decision we would make potentially is the memo of understanding that's brought in front of us today, correct?
Yeah, if that, if that's what council is comfortable with, I mean, even a consensus, I would be comfortable with, to be able to bring that back to the land bank if, if council's not comfortable with approving either of these documents. I think we really just wanted to initiate the conversation and understand where the city was.
All in favor of the consideration.
Yeah. Okay, I appreciate that. And then beyond that, maybe Jeff can answer some of the more specific questions.
Since you pointed me out. So, anticipating that question, we did have the engineers look that up, and there is an existing 20-foot wide.
There is.
There is an existing 20-foot wide easement over the sanitary sewer.
Okay.
When, when that sewer was originally built, Locust Street went all the way out to Bryant. When the first phase of the school was built, the sewer was turned to then head out to Cedar Street. When a second phase of the school was built, the school was built over the sewer. So, when the city separated the sewer district and the Cedar Street sewer district, it rerouted that sewer so it turns and goes straight out to Cedar Street and doesn't conflict. The city also built a storm sewer on the property, and I don't remember, and we didn't find an easement for the storm sewer, but the primary purpose of that storm sewer was to take the roof drains off the school and get them out of the sanitary and pipe them through the storm and, and remove that illicit connection. Plus, that property's wet, so there's also drainage that comes off that parking lot and from the grounds. So, there's some little details that we'll have to work through in the future.
Perfect, thank you.
Anything else? I guess, everybody kind of, so, I guess I want to be clear that we're really just going to make kind of a statement that, yeah, we're interested as a city in purchasing something, or are we going to request that the memo of understanding be changed to meet, you know, some of these, put at ease some of these questions?
Katie, I think you were, were you okay with that meet the deadline of July 30th, if we just took a consensus rather than, because I, I kind of agree that the letter we mentioned for Kano's, we're mentioning the Sands Park Control Board a little bit and the maintenance of that. I think we're, I think you just want to know, yes or no, do we want, if we have the opportunity to purchase or be given or whatever?
Yeah, I think that's okay.
Is that okay? That would meet?
And Bill.
So, also we can meet that July 30th deadline and just be in agreement, but not throw in other things?
Yeah.
And then come, come with input?
Yeah, and then I can communicate with Bill about potentially getting this back on the agenda or maybe doing a work session. Yeah, the, the MOU was really to just give something concrete to present to you guys, but I think that consensus on the record is something I could take back to the land bank and that we can continue with discussion from there.
Thank you, and I think the more input you allow. There were hard feelings, and it's so sad that there's hard feelings created over a school or whatever, but it was the, kind of the lack of the input from the neighborhood. We felt that things were being decided in this, you know, a little bit, and if we could just be open, have more input, and we'd appreciate that opportunities.
Yeah, most definitely, and I do appreciate the public that came, if I can have just a little moment, the public that came to the land bank authority meeting. You know, the land bank is still kind of in its infancy. Our land bank was established in 2018. We really want to be an economic development driver and do good things for the community, so we want to be as transparent as possible and invite the community with their opinions. You know, I, I want the land bank to be like a really good thing for our community and have that good reputation, so we wouldn't want to do anything that might affect that. So, if anybody ever has questions on what a land bank does, you know, including the public, please feel free to reach out. We're trying to do good things, so.
Katie, when you, you intend to do a walk around and talk to the neighbors and see what they have?
I think once we have something more concrete with maps, you know, the land bank hasn't even officially settled on like an agreement to acquire the property. It's been all very conceptual and, you know, these initial conversations, but we have not actually nailed, nailed down like when and for how much we are acquiring the property from maps for. So, once that becomes more of a reality and we are interested in potentially seeking out developers and starting to really get the ball rolling, I think that will be the time when we kind of invite for public comment. My hope is that that happens sometime, maybe in this calendar year, that we finalize things with maps, and then over the winter can start kind of thinking about what the ideas for the property are and how we can engage the public. But yeah, we'll make sure to advertise that and, and make sure that people are aware. We'll, we'll blast it out, so.
Who decided that angle of the property?
So, the initial concept that had come out of maps that was presented to you guys several month, months ago was actually very similar to what this option A is showing. And this was just through discussion with Bill, and I think based off of that initial concept that maps had put forward at some of the ideas. So, again, it's, it's still subject to, obviously, your guys' approval and to, to change as we discuss further, but I would just take this as kind of like the initial ideas based off the concept.
I just kind of worry about, because of what the lawsuit they went through, and the people that were mad about the place and all that stuff, so.
Mm-hmm.
Probably you're going to have to come up with that.
Yeah, understood.
No, I, I agree with Liz that right now, this is about having an understanding of, of exploring that and saying, yes, our residents really want to look at the availability of that space and what could be, and bring all parties to the table, so there's a lot of clarity as the process moves forward. And I love the idea of having a joint study session. I think that's a great opportunity for everyone to look at the same thing, hear the same thing, and ask the same questions. So, I'm in agreement that I think that our consensus is we want to go forward and get more information and be putting that forward. And Katie, would it be appropriate to like go around and, and not necessarily vote, but assent or give our, I don't know what the format is?
Well, I'm, that's what I was going to ask. So, you, council does not want to vote on this item at this time?
I think we could. Yeah, I think. I think we could ensure, just in case.
Okay, so.
Just to comply.
The way that you need to, if there's a motion, you need to state the preference, which is option A, with or without the parking, or B, just the playground.
So, A would be the park, the playground and green space with or without the parking lot?
We'd need to make that decision, that.
Well.
Just to give them something.
Interested.
Just let us know what you're interested in.
Yes.
Just let us know what.
We know you're not liking it, I think.
No, you're not like us. This is just interest.
Right.
So, are you showing interest in like the entire, or you could just say that option C, you could do like an A for the B, or you could do your own option C on what you want to put out there? So.
Yeah, this is just preliminary to start the discussion.
Yes, it is.
I make a motion to option A.
With the parking lot.
With the parking lot.
Second that.
Move it on.
Okay. Thank you.
I know.
So, we just need a roll call for A then, Heather?
Yes.
Okay. Parking lot.
Yes, so we did option A, and that is with the parking lot, you said, correct?
Yes.
Make sure I add that, okay. Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
I'm sorry, but.
Oh.
I'm totally confused, because this A-B thing, I was a little surprised it wasn't indicated under, in the memo of understanding, and am I missing it on the agenda as an agenda item?
Well, it said indicating preference, indicating acquisition preference.
So, you're adding that part on?
No, it said at the end of the motion, it says indicating acquisition preference.
You approve a memorandum.
Okay. Understanding. Time out.
agenda as an agenda item?
Well, it said indicating preference, indicating acquisition preference.
Are you adding that part on?
No, it said at the end of the motion, it says indicating acquisition preference.
Approve a memorandum.
Okay. Understanding. Part of the planning.
And then we reviewed the options.
At this time, council should take action to approve a memorandum. Okay, show me where it is, because I must be blind. It says, interested in acquiring a portion of this site of public green space. It doesn't say we have to-
No, in the motion, where it says motion by-
This time.
Or at this time, council could take action to approve a memorandum of understanding with the MLC, MCLBA and the corresponding letter of intent regarding Jefferson property indicating acquisition preference.
Thank you. I guess sometimes I'm slow. What can I say? Thank you for your patience. Okay.
Did I say, okay, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan? Councilmember Keck?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Roska?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of sale of city-owned property Renaissance Park Lot Number Two. City received an offer to purchase city-owned property Renaissance Park Number Two in Manistee Township for the listing price of 18,000. Owners of Grand Rale Station in Manistee are proposing expanding their operations by constructing a facility for storage and processing of rental equipment. At this time, council will take action to accept the offer, offer and authorize the city clerk and mayor to execute all documents. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. And I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Is that the normal price then Bill for 18,000?
That was the listing price. That's what the last, that's what Lot Four also sold for, so.
When did he put this price on the property? You don't?
I can get you the date, but it's been several months.
Okay.
When the city sells property, where does that income go? Where, what fund?
I don't know that. If you can mention the fund, we could-
So it, it's supposed to go towards local streets, but it goes into a revenue account.
Because it'd be nice if we needed the property to, I always think when you get rid of a, an asset, it's sometimes nice to have a like-kind asset. If we sold property, it might be nice to use that if we needed money to acquire Jefferson.
City manager's comment. Council previously passed a resolution that said any property sales go to local street funds. So you'd have to change that in order to do that.
I remembered that.
Thanks, Ed.
Anybody else? Heather, would you please take a roll? Councilmember Raditz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Keck?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Roska?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Consideration of updating CP 39 Special Events Policy. The proposed updates to policy CP 39 Special Events would include several key recommendations from the city attorney, the Events Ad-Hoc Committee, and the Downtown Development Authority. In addition to reflecting these key recommendations, the revisions to CP 39 Special Events aim to establish a clear, legally compliant, and community-oriented framework for supporting public events. At this time, council will take action to update the CP 39 Special Events Policy. Is there a motion?
I'll make, I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I guess-
Sorry, go ahead.
Regarding the signatures, the, you know, I think it's a good idea because then the neighbors will know. But I guess I'm wondering who's going to be authorized to sign? Because, you know, what if you go in and the sales clerk signs it or something? So I guess I'm throwing out there, you know, add someplace that it has to be a responsible party that signs it or add the signatory title on the form.
So basically you're saying authorized signatures, so someone like an owner or the manager?
Yeah, whoever you deem acceptable. I just, I'm afraid, you know, you're gonna, it's gonna be hard to get signatures. It's gonna be a lot of work. I understand that. And somebody's gonna go in and, I need a signature and then the sales clerk's gonna sign it and the owner's gonna go, well, I didn't know anything about it.
Yeah.
I'm trying to prevent any turmoil, so.
So, yeah, I think, yeah, we could talk to the DDA about that and see if it's gonna be the owner or the manager. I think that's, and sometimes a manager's better, but sometimes the owner wants to know.
Party, you know, I, I mean, if the owner designates the sales clerk, I'm good with it.
So, yeah, and so the-
It's not my fault.
The signatures, that's gonna be kind of part of that downtown process. That's not so much for neighborhoods yet, but I think it gives us a framework. If we need to, we can, you know, expand it to that at some point.
Anything else? Heather, would you please take a roll? Councilmember Raditz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Keck?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Roska?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of amending CP 10 City Council Guidelines Policy has been requested that the city council consider amending CP 10 to include language to limit council members serving on other city commissions. The proposed language is intended to allow for a city council liaison while limiting broader council involvement, therefore preserving the independence of the city board and commissions. At this time, council will take action to amend CP 10 City Council Guidelines Policy. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes. What is the difference of if you have one on and you appoint another and nobody else can go on? I think that's a bad policy right here.
Jim, can you explain? I didn't quite understand what you, what you, I didn't, what do you?
Well, how are you gonna, you're gonna, the mayor's gonna appoint somebody on there and then if somebody else wants to run, they can run from the council? How is that gonna work?
What do you mean run?
Limit council members from serving on other city commissions. Why can't that-
Well, because we're trying to get more people involved. So it's not the same people on every single-
I understand that, but the thing is, you know, a lot of people won't serve. You don't, hardly get sometimes somebody, you need somebody to apply for it. And if you're gonna block a commis, council person from sitting on there, I don't think that's good. You have to have somebody get on the committee.
How many open seats do we have on committees and commissions now?
I have two vacancies right now.
And that's pretty, pretty standard?
I have the Compensation Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's very hard for me to fill that, I'm sorry?
What was that first one I didn't hear?
The Compensation Commission. That one's really hard for me to fill because they only meet once every two years. Nobody wants to, it's, it's just they lose interest. So a lot of them just forget about it. And then also the Zoning Board of Appeals, they meet as needed. It's not a regular meeting, but that's, that's all I have right now.
Do we traditionally have problems getting applicants for these positions?
You know, in the past, there's been a couple that were difficult. Like, I know we had some difficulties on the peg commission at one time, but lately, now that I've got a system down for how I fill them, I, I, I'm kind of strict on how I fill them. I keep them, you know, on the first meeting of every month and I, I really don't have a difficult time. We may, you, if you see a lot on there, it's because that's a month where there's a lot of vacancies. So like June, there's several boards that have a June expiration date. So if you see a lot, that's just, that's a month where there's a lot of expirations. But they've been filling up quite a bit, so, yeah, I haven't had a difficult time.
Excellent.
What if they don't?
Laney and I are both on the parks, so I, you know, probably excuse our surf, I will from this, but the Parks Commission has been an amazing commission to be on. And Laney was a past, you were past chair, I was past chair. So much has gotten accomplished in the parks and the DPW, we work well with. I mean, it's, it's been a, I think the parks have been on fire. Like the last five or six years, we've got a great commission and we've got, we work well with the DPW that, in, in the last, since I've been on it, there has been not been an op, there has not been people competing for the same position. Last city council meeting, we appointed one person who, you know, there was one applicant, one opening. The previous one, there was two applicants, two openings, the previous, and then we'd had vacancies for a few months in there. So, and the Parks Commission isn't a, a meeting commission. It's a hands-on painting. We, you know, Morton Park, we worked so hard and are still working hard, planting, planting the grasses in there, doing the equipment. It's painting all the different things, planting, all the events. We had an event, Karen Maugh is our current chair, who's here, an outstanding event. It's, we hosted all these events in the parks, the community events. At those, I mean, there's hands-on hours of that. They're not lined up to get on the Parks Commission, I can say that. And there's also monetary. It's like, well, there's not funding for treats, but you invite kids to a story hour. So everybody just, it's an amazing group of people that are currently on there. Well, here's the money, you know, buy this, buy that. So I don't know. I, I, I would feel sad. I would be the one probably that would step down. So that's, you know, I won't vote on this, but- I guess I feel that we're basically fixing a problem that really doesn't exist and we should be working on real problems. I don't think that it's not gonna change how council members, what they support and how they, they're gonna vote. And, you know, basically, you know, we're probably still gonna walk in park, work in the parks no matter what happens, because that's what we support. And I do know, you know, there's been times where commission seats are difficult to fill. It, it ebbs and flows. I think if people are upset about something, they get on the commission and try to make change. The other question I had is, so what happens? There's something, city, some council commissions that are, you get appointed. And so there's somebody who's been appointed on a commission by the council and in November, somebody gets elected who's already seated on that commission. Do you understand? So let's say, I'll give you an example. Liz currently serves on the NRBC and so does Kathy Grabowski. So Kathy Grabowski gets elected in November and then what happens? Does, you know, the mayor has to basically kick somebody off if we follow this?
I think that, I think it would be that someone would step down and one person on the NRBC, there has to be one, per the NRBC bylaws, there must be one council member on there.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I think Kathy Grabowski would have to make that decision. Do I want to stay as a city councilor? Do I want to, I, I, that's how I would see it.
And if I can, just because, if I can just say, because there are times when I will hold, somebody will send an application in and there won't be a vacancy and I will hold that application for them. I'll ask them, you want me to hold it? And if something comes up. And so I've done that before. In fact, I did that for one that was just appointed recently. I'd held on to that application for several months. So there are certain boards that draw more attention, that have people that really want to be on. But you'll see, when you have an incumbent and a new applicant, a lot of times an incumbent will be reappointed because they have knowledge of that board and, and especially if you get like the Planning Commission or, you know, a commission like that, that really the knowledge is needed. They make a lot of important decisions and so it's hard to get on that board. It takes a resignation or, you know, someone moving outside the community for someone new to be able to get on that board. So just know that there are some boards that are kind of more of a coveted position that people do look for. And I have held applications for a while. People will just say, we'll just hold it. If a vacancy comes up, put it on the agenda. So, you know, just because you don't know that there's people waiting, there are people that do wait for, for these boards at times.
So, so how does that really benefit the city and does it really make sense? It's a little bit like the drop program. We say, we want the employees to stay on, so we voted to offer, you know, a little incentive ties to, to stay on because we value their experience and their work. And I kind of do this the same way. Well, and I did have a suggestion to add a phrase that, you know, because that is an issue, you know, so then somebody has to give up who could be doing good work for the city. You know, either the mayor will have to, I mean, I'm sorry, kick him off or somebody will have to kick themselves off. Now, that's, might be an easier or hard decision, who you are. But, you know, during organizational meetings, current council appointees, if agreeable to the council member, will be left serving in their current appointing capacity until a change is requested by the council member. That allows, like you were saying, organizational continuity, less commission disruption, and historical knowledge.
And on top of that, what you recommended, you said, well, one of them would have to go because they got knowledge of it, but the other person has been working on that commission, so for five years. So now you, which one are you gonna choose?
I, I'm thoughtful that, I think this language is coming forward just to make sure that we're not eating our own young, you know? If there's three city council members on the, on the Parks Commission, is it the Parks Commission truly and authentically? I'm a former government teacher. This, this strikes me as the opportunity that some people won't run for office if they know that they don't have a chance of being appointed or, you know, coming forward and speaking in front of people or having to just, you know, having an open vacancy and having people in the community say, you know what, you've been doing this with the MRA or the part, you know, you've been doing this. This is your, this is your opportunity. Oh, but there's people who know how to do it better than I do. No, we need, we need you. At some point, the more people with experience that fill more and more spots beyond our liaisoned role-
Well, not even the experience, but the desire and the, yeah.
Yeah, but just being me, I will take up all the air in the room if I say I want to be on a committee. I'll push people out just because I, I, I have the confidence and knowledge and everything, everyone on this commit, on this council has. We have deep connections and deep understanding and a deep desire to make this world better, but not at the expense of, of eating our young. That, that's the only thing that I see about this. It says, city council will have a liaison on these other, you know, these other arms of, that, that we are kind of the boss of. And our, when we sit at those smaller meetings, that influence cannot, it's bias. And I feel like it pushes, it pushes people out whether we consciously wish that or understand it. So I just make a plea to look at it from that point of view, from a new person's perspective. And I, I would advocate for amending these guidelines and seeing what happens and having our faith in the processes and procedures that have been slowly but effectively bringing people to committees that stay and love the work.
And they are advisory committees to the council. So they are, they're bringing information to councils. They, they make decisions to bring to council for you, you know, or they, they discuss and then bring their information to, to you.
So if half of that council is already on the board-
Yes.
There is definitely gonna be bias there. Or there is going to feel like there's bias or be seen as biased.
What you're missing, the point, is you can take us off, you know, disallow more than one person, but it isn't gonna change. I, as a coun, as a citizen, can still attend meetings.
Yes.
Still give equal.
Absolutely.
And it's not gonna change the way I think or the fact that I support parks. So it's not gonna change the vote. And I gotta tell you, it seems, you're talking about bias and we just went through a whole short-term rental thing where there's bias, where somebody had, owns a short-term rental. So I think that's a little conflict there, so.
I, I appreciate your thoughts and sharing them and I appreciate the fact that you're listening to maybe just one person's point of view. But I think that's why these guidelines came forward, was to have that opportunity, to have that authentic voice of the people that are in our community and, and not necessarily the people who are already in service, so.
Well, we are the voice of the community. That's, I guess, the part I'm not getting.
But in this-
Well, never mind. It's, it's not gonna change anything. You will do it, I understand.
I, and I understand. I also understand as the principal, sometimes the conversations in the teachers lounge change when I walk in. So, and sometimes teachers need to talk, you know? I'm just saying, you know? So I just want to bring that point of view forward and thank you for listening.
Do we have a motion in a second, Melissa?
We do have a motion in a second. I have a motion by Mayor Protem Smith and a second by Councilmember Keck.
Okay. Would you please take a roll? Councilmember Raditz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky?
I'll abstain because I think it's directed at me being-
I'll abstain because I think it's directed at me being on the parks.
Okay.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Keck?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
No.
Councilmember Resga?
I would either be abstaining or no, so I guess I, it's a no.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will have a report from Mr. Bradford on the oil and gas board.
Actually, you get three for one. I'll try to keep them brief. Counsel.
It's back.
There you go. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about our, the Finance Treasurer's Office, the oil and gas board, and also the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. In our office, we have over 59 years of city experience, but much more than that if you consider the past experience that people have had with different organizations. It's probably closer to 80 years or more. But we have Heather, who is the longest tenured person down there, 25 years. I'm right behind her with 23 years. Laura Lorraine, our deputy clerk in peril, is eight years. Laura McKenzie, two years, and our brand-new hire, Brookley, who introduced herself a couple of meetings ago, has been with us a few months. But it's a really hard-working crew. Everybody gets along great, and there's just a lot of teamwork down there. It's a really nice work environment. Our responsibilities, we answer a lot of questions about a lot of different topics. Obviously, the treasurer, we receive all the revenue for the city. I invest the cash for the city. We pay bills, range bonding and financing, accounting functions like budgeting and the audit, and the day-to-day accounting. We do financial analysis. We do a lot of financial reporting. I'm also the primary liaison for our IT vendor, and I do some of the frontline stuff, a little less, due to time constraints. It's more strategic. I oversee the facility manager, Mark Hansen. The assessor reports to me, and for the next year, we'll be doing the Ramslough back office. Office metrics, we have up to 125 customers a day at the counter during the busy season, which is in the summer. Annually, we process 7,100 tax bills and collect about almost $14 million worth of taxes to be distributed. Approximately 42,000 annual water bills, about 2,500 AP payments on 5,600 invoices, approximately $25 million worth of payments. And we field lots and lots of phone calls and emails. Just a few highlights from the previous year. Obviously, fiscal year 2024 audit was once again clean. We had a very challenging 25 budget, but I think it came together and we got that adopted, so that was a good thing. I mentioned my new staff member, Brookley. She replaced the previous utility clerk, Kaylee Owens. So I've been getting her trained and integrated in, and we still have a ways to go because she's only been there for a few months, but we're excited about that. And then, one of our big initiatives last year in September, we upgraded our enterprise software to the BSNA cloud version from the BSNA on-premise version. And that was, had its fair amount of challenges. There are a few bumps in the road, but now that we're in it, you know, six, seven months, we've been really happy with it. It adds a lot of functionality. They're constantly doing enhancements to it. For example, they have a new payment platform that integrates 100% seamlessly. So when people make payments online, it's like they're paying at the counter. We don't have to do any extra steps. And it's been very helpful. So we're really pleased with that, and I think it'll continue to, to move ahead. Some things that we're going to be working on this year, we're going to be doing a pilot with BSNA using some AI technology to help process invoices, to kind of see how that works in terms of getting them entered to save time. So we're really excited about that. That should be happening in the next few months. We're still trying to upgrade our wireless network. You see the little dish down there in the middle? We have a very extensive wireless network that we kind of built up over the years, and a lot of that equipment is aging out. And so hopefully, this fiscal year, we're going to get a lot of that upgraded. So we're going through some of the details of that. And then, we're going, in the process of procuring a new boat launch auto attendant down at the First Street launch. We've had some issues with the one this year. I think we got it in a stable spot now, but it's time to replace it, so we'll be doing that. Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, it's a five-member board. You can see the members up there. Roger Yoder is the long chair. I'm the Brownfield administrator, and Kirk Perschbacker from Fishbeck is our consultant. You know, briefly, what is a brownfield? You know, they're properties that traditionally have contamination, or really difficult conditions that make their redevelopment complicated. They could be functionally obsolete. Often, they're former manufacturing or industrial sites, and they're typically found in urban areas and older communities, as opposed to green fields, which are often found in townships. They're obviously very expensive to redevelop, and may have been vacant for a long period of time. And why do you have a program? Well, there's three main reasons. One, it helps to re-energize the local economy. Anytime you get new development in an old building, there's a multiplier effect. People see that happening. They want to do more work, and it just kind of raises the whole community up. Helps to improve neighborhoods as well, and it helps to protect the environmental health. And we'll be talking about that last one here in a minute in regards to the Gateway Project. So I'm glad to report, we got the Brownfield Plan approved last meeting, which is excellent news. It's been a very long time in coming, and we're excited about that. The consultant, Fishbeck, is working on the Act 381 work plan, which is a very lengthy document. We have to get that complete and submit that to both the MEDC and the Eagle. That will allow Little River Holdings to continue on their financing through MEDC. That plan, again, had about $33.2 million in eligible costs on a total project of about $90 million. So you can see, you know, that's a third of the financing for that project. Now, some of that is public infrastructure, but the point is, you can't do a project like this without getting creative with the financing, and the Brownfield TIF is just one of those tools in the toolbox. I mentioned one of the purposes of the Brownfield is to remediate environmental conditions. Well, every one of the seven parcels that the Gateway Project's going to go on has some level of contamination, some worse than others in different kinds. The city previously received an Eagle grant loan to help clean that site up. And hopefully, in the fall, maybe as, as early as October, you'll, should see some soil being removed down there if everything goes according to plan. It won't be the full remediation, but there's going to be quite a bit taken out, and then that will be in preparation for the ultimate construction. So that's exciting news. That's the plan as it stands right now. 9194 Arthur Street, you can see the old building, the old pizza place there on the top, and you can kind of see the new building that they've constructed on the bottom. That really has come together well. I think they have their seawall in. They said they're expecting to open in August. I'm not quite sure they're going to make that deadline, but I suspect this fall. The project used to be called the Lakeside Social, but they rebranded it to the Wander Inn, and local chef Brian Kissel is going to be the cook there. So that's going to be excellent news. I think everybody's really excited to get that up and running and have another dining. Again, this is a project that wouldn't have happened without the Brownfield Plan and support. So it's a really important tool in the economic toolbox. Shifting gears a little bit to the Oil and Gas Investment Fund and the board, again, just an overview for the public. It's a charter-protected trust fund, and it was established to preserve royalties from our oil and gas resources, and city mineral rights for future generations. The board oversees those funds and the investment advisor. We manage that fund as an endowment, much like the Community Foundation manages their endowment funds. We do the same with the Oil and Gas Fund. And there's an annual distribution that goes towards capital projects. It's really important to point out, and I think this is a pretty amazing metric. When I started with the city 23 years ago, the value of the Oil and Gas Fund was about $6.3 million. Right now, the Oil and Gas Fund is about $14 million, and we've spent almost $7.5 million for capital projects. So by managing this like an endowment, not only are you able to fund a significant amount of projects, but you're able to grow that fund, which it just keeps compounding. It's sustainable for future generations, and that's, it's really worked perfectly. So it's, we're pretty proud of that. It's really done a lot of good for the city. And kudos to, you know, previous councils that had the foresight to set that aside and put that in front of the voters on the charter. Oil and Gas Board is comprised of the mayor, myself, councilmember Lasky, and two members of the community, Doug Parks and Jeff Rahoe. City manager is ex-officio. Kelly McCall is our recording secretary, and we meet quarterly. Just a brief thing about Hound Resources. Back in 2021, they acquired the assets of Aspec Producing, and we've had better communication with the new owners. They've cleaned up a lot of the old royalty payments. They also have been, I think, a little bit better about facilitating questions from the residents who also have some mineral rights. Recently, we've had some complaints about some gas. They had a leaky gas line that they fixed. I think that problem has pretty much been cleared up. But, you know, there have been odor issues from time to time, but that was a big reason for the ones recently, and I believe they got that corrected. This is our, your investment management team for the portfolio from Bartlett. Woody Hubel, Jonathan Finkler, and Brian Walker. Woody's the main portfolio manager. They do an absolutely excellent job for us. They're extremely economical, and we've been super happy with them. They've managed this fund since 2008, when we were able to start investing it in a more aggressive manner due to changes in state law. Their five-year trailing return is 10%, which meets our benchmarks. So we're, we're pretty happy about that. Snapshot is at March 31st, 2025. The fund's just a little $14 million. We have that 65.35, 65.35% asset allocation. They try to stick with that, and they rebalance as needed. But this is a, you know, this isn't a full-stock portfolio. It's a, it's a fairly balanced portfolio. It's, it's appropriate for an endowment fund like this, and has worked very well. With that, I'd take any questions on any of those three kind of little departments.
I hope I hear more about this AI BSNA.
Oh, my gosh.
Sounds, I'm jealous.
I'm excited, actually.
Yeah, I'm a B2. That, that sounds really neat.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you.
Comment. This is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities, or other areas of city involvement, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read.
Hello, I'm Karen Mall from 536 Fourth Street, and I know you guys probably hear a lot more criticism than praise. So I'm here to say something positive, and thank you for the curbside recycling. Thank you. We're a big family. We do a lot of recycling. It was a lot of hauling to the landfill, and then.
We very appreciate the TPW twice a month. It's great. We're already at capacity with a couple days to go. So my question, if any of you have guidance on what to do,
if you have too much recycling, that is too much for the bin, is there a second bin, or is it okay to slide boxes under the?
We'll help, yeah, we'll help you and the neighbor.
I can put it in yours? Because, okay, I'll just run it across the street.
Fun person in their home.
Perfect. Okay, so I just wanted to say thank you. It's, it's a really great service, and I know some people are for it and against it, and I just, I really appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Jeff Kestrel, O'Leary Wall Street, and compliments of Jim. I got some of these ordinances, and I have to agree with a lot of people right now that they're too vague, they're too broad, they need to be reined in. You know, you, you say, well, let's see if you're just for one. And the other thing was blithe. Are we, is blithe considered in normal people's housing, rental housing, AB&amp;B housing? Is that all in one big package, or is there two separate types of blithe? And the other thing I saw was, oh, how did you guys, weeds. We let the height of grass grow to 10 inches? There's no wonder half these lots of manacy look like crap. I mean, well, my guy next door, you all know about him, that's, but right across from Huntington Bank and A&amp;W there, there's that empty lot. The weeds are always like that tall. But if you're allowing people to grow weeds to 10 inches to begin with, I mean, that needs to be changed, as far as I'm concerned. I think there isn't a grass out there that goes over six inches unless it's an ornamental. You know, why, why do we have such a ridiculous height limitation on that? That's one thing I would change right off the get-go. We are making progress on that dump next to me, and I hope that the city prevails on this, because if they don't, I can see it's going to just turn into the same old thing that I've been looking at for the last 15 years. But like I said, I've been going through some of these anti-blithe weeds, residential rental properties nuances, but there's also, when you read something, and then you look back up and you cross-reference to, you know, you take, what should I say, 65.02 definitions or purpose, you know, and going from 65. But then it runs to cross-reference, so then you got to go to CBH 1482. You know, it's like, you have the chapter and the ordinance, but if it's not specific, then you've got to go to some other ordinance or cross-reference, you know, that's 1, 1,200 numbers away, and look up something else to go back to something else with a cross-reference. We really, you know, and Mr. Scare said it, and I'm kind of looking into it, seeing it. Some of this stuff really needs to be changed. Get some strong definitions. You know, when they say penalties, well, the city's going to charge you. What are the penalties, you know, if you're doing blithe? It should say right in there. This is what you're required, and this is what you're going to be charged if you don't meet these requirements. You shouldn't have to go look through another chapter or another ordinance to find out what it is, or call the city, you know? If a guy's coming in to buy some property, and he's going to make money off of it, he ought to be able to know, this is what I have to do in order, and this is what I'm going to be fined, and this is the consequences if I don't follow what the rules are. And that should be in, in the AB&amp;Bs. It should be in the rental. It might be a little harder to do the same thing, per se, me as my, as a homeowner. But if I'm making money off a property, I should have a higher standard of rules, and the rules should be explicit, and they should be backed up. And I don't see where the city's been backing this up for years. And I don't want to keep going back to, to the place next door to me, because hopefully that won't be there, but under, yeah. I don't have that one with me. Oh, the anti-blithe. And blithe structure. Then there's one, two, three, four, five subtitles under that. That house next to me has been violated of four of those for the last 15 years. There's no fascias, there's no sofas. Me and the neighbor used to watch raccoons climbing and out of the roof, you know? There's, there's just stuff that, that's in there, and it needs to be just addressed. I know when I first started redoing my house, and I had to deal with Mr. Neeson, I went up to his, his office there, and right there, there was a thing that said rental property, fascias, sofas, screens, doors. It was specified.
Your five minutes.
What needed to be done. And I think we need to get back into that and start putting some meat behind that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Campbell?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Nothing. Thank you.
I'm all good. Thank you.
Ms. Lasky? Ms. Keck?
I'm good. Thank you.
Dirk Grabowski?
Yeah, a couple of things. Bill, I know we have to go to court on Friday with that house done. Did they get that demolition report done?
We got a quote, and it's actually, we got, the court date's now Tuesday, so.
Okay. Oh, moved to Tuesday from Friday. Okay. The other house up on Maple Street, I mean, the junk is piled in the windows. The smell is horrendous. Want to go stand by it? I've done it. The neighbors on both sides have complained to me. We got to get in there. I found the ordinance that says smell for the neighborhood, so that's in the ordinance, so we can do something. The last thing I have is, four of us went up to River City yesterday, and we went to that recycling place that they opened for our totes. And it was quite interesting. We walked through the whole process. We walked through the whole process and they showed us how they break between the plastic and the iron and, I mean, they had even bowling balls going around in there. And so if you get a chance from anybody on the commissions or councils to go up there, it would be well worth it. Have Bill drive it. He drove less. So it would be, you know, real advantageous to go up to the seawall. And they put out a lot of, a lot of junk. Some stuff goes to PCA, some goes out west and it's not just a couple of pounds, it's thousands of tons, pounds and tons. So it's really interesting. Thank you.
Roscoe.
Heather, if you could please read what we approved for, under New Business, eight,
B?
Yes.
For the memorandum? Sorry, let me get to that page. You approved, it was motion by Smith, second by Keck, to approve a memorandum of understanding with the MCLBA and the corresponding letter of intent regarding the Jefferson School property indicating acquisition preference, option A with parking lot.
I guess I was surprised when that went through because we had thoroughly discussed, what I recall, we didn't like the memo of understanding and we were willing to do, or the letter of intent, but we wanted the land bank to know, like just a regular letter, that we intended to purchase the property. I thought that was, am I like, was me?
No, I, I think you're right. But I think what, what was said is that we aren't going to sign that memorandum.
But that's not what we approved. So.
She was just asking for the fact that we were interested and she was going to take that back before we did any of that. But yes, you're right. That is what we approved.
So.
Need to send the letter and do we need to send?
Well, yeah, we got to do something because this is clearly not what we intended.
I guess what do you think the letter says versus what it's intended?
Well, there were errors and, you know, there was the phrase in the memo of understanding, this isn't a binding agreement. This is, is a binding agreement, two bullet points.
It says it will result in a binding agreement, which that will be attached to, is what I thought. That this is not a binding agreement. It is strictly by definition, an MOA. Yeah, and the letter of intent is just kind of a, it's a statement of interest and potential outcomes, but it's not a.
I didn't vote for that and I don't know who else did because I, I clearly heard everybody agree that, yeah, we're interested in a land sale, but the letter of intent and the memorandum, the memorandum of understanding, not so much.
Lady, I'm agreeing that that was the initial discussion. There was a lot of discussion, but at the end, my understanding was that this is an opening, not like for, you know, it's opening the door saying we have an understanding that this will move forward. So I did pull back my reservations in hopes of coming together at a study session where we can really go through very detailed and, and not move forward from this point. So you're, you're right. I had a lot of reservations, but, but I, I put them aside so that we could, we could have this forward motion.
But there's, there's a difference between what we said and what we formally approved. And I guess I would like our legal to clarify that for me. So we are doing what we really want to do.
She only said.
Yes, yes.
But Heather read.
But that's why I asked before I read it. I said, so you don't want to do a motion? And I believe everyone said, no, we do want to vote.
Right, but nobody brought, there was no prompting, like you usually do, to say, change that motion and we should have. And if anybody would have saw the look on my face when that went through, I'm surprised.
Is there, this is, it's not binding at all. This is more just opening the door.
I just read the motion that was.
I just stated it. I'm waiting for Mr. Blake.
But what is your reservation with, with the MOA? It's not legally binding. It's merely, hey, let's, let's put something on the calendar to discuss.
But the next bullet point said it's legally binding.
It results in illegally binding, which that, I understand will be attached to.
Can we have the legal advisor that we paid for?
Absolutely.
Give an opinion?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Blake, I don't know if you've heard the discussion.
So, yeah, the MOA is not, not a model of drafting clarity, but that is a fair interpretation of it that, you know, it's non-binding and will result in a binding agreement when the parties later negotiate and approve one. That's the most reasonable interpretation of that provision.
So.
Does that answer your question?
Yes. So we, we approved not signing the memo of understanding.
Well, you approved the language that the clerk read, which I believe was to execute that agreement as written. You could certainly, it's still appropriate to make a motion to amend that previously approved motion to state something different. You can, you can do that.
Well, I believe something should be done to amend that. I would like to make a motion to amend that. That we would like the land bank to receive a letter that states, yes, we are interested in pursuing the purchase of some of that land and that's it.
I think she wanted the option two, like option.
Well, okay, specifically option A.
With apartment.
Yeah.
And I was, and it is, I was using the term acquire because I'm hoping we don't have to pay money for it, but perhaps they gift it to us.
Acquire is fine, yeah, but.
So I don't know if there's a second.
I'm really confused.
So do you need to restate the amend?
So.
The motion was made to.
Let me bring this back up here.
I think she's right.
So I have a motion by Roscoe to.
Rescind?
Wait.
Do we have to formally rescind that previous motion?
No, you're, you're not rescinding anything. What are you, you want to amend?
Yeah, you have to amend.
The original motion?
Yes.
I guess Blake, tell me how you think this should be. I'm really confused on what's happening.
Sure. I, I guess you could, if, if your intention is to amend that previously approved motion, the motion would be motion to amend the previously approved motion to state and then your new motion language.
That we notify, Mr. Kimball sends a letter, for example, that land bank, that yes, the city is interested in pursuing acquiring parcel A. That's basically it. It, it, there's no.
State the motion clearly so she can write it. So previous, we're amending the previously approved motion to state.
That we would like the city manager to send a letter of intent to acquire parcel A.
Parcel A or option?
Option A.
Okay, option A.
In the parking lot.
Yeah, the Jefferson School property, if you need to add that. I mean, I'm, I'm sure there's.
With the parking.
When you write the letter, it will. But that's it. None of those other intentions come into play.
Other intentions? I'm not understanding.
You don't, I'm, I don't want you to write that. I'm just saying it's left at that.
So to amend the previously approved motion to state, the city manager will write a letter to acquire?
I would think a letter would be good.
I just need to know what the exact motion needs to state.
Write a letter stating city council's interest in acquiring option A of the current Jefferson School property.
With the, shouldn't it mention land bank?
That's who we send in the letter to, the land bank. Would you like to read that back?
I'm, yeah, I think it's really long. So to amend the previously approved motion to state, the city manager will write a letter to the land bank? To acquire or for the acquisition of option A with parking lot?
It, it's just option A.
With, not with parking lot now?
Oh, with parking lot. I see what you're saying.
With the parking lot?
With the parking lot. Thank you.
Okay. Is that what you want to say?
I think that's good. Anybody want to add anything or? I mean, I'm doing this on a.
The fly.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, are we ready for a roll call? Councilmember Raditz.
Is there a second?
Was there a second?
Oh, is there a second? I'm sorry. Oh, yes.
Now during discussion, could we check in again with Blake about the wording of the motion?
Yes, I think that wording is.
Would that be okay? Just to, okay.
Blake, they're wanting your opinion on the language in the motion. I think that's sufficient.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the language is sufficiently clear. It's a motion to authorize the city manager to draft a, a letter of intent to acquire option A, including the parking lot.
Okay, thank you. Blake, thank you.
I think that, just to clarify, I think the reason, one of the things is maybe all she wants to know is whether we are interested in or not interested. It wasn't, and then we mentioned the Sands Park and we mentioned, and so those things would be alleviated and also for condos. So it was just a little simpler.
Could you please take a roll? Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Yeah.
Motion approved. Thank you. Anything else, Roscoe?
Just a couple of things. Friday at 7:30, a group called Mississippi Heat is at the Ramstall, 7:30, and they've been nominated for Blues Band of the Year for this year's Living Blues Awards. That's really, I'll make you to bring up. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.